Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please stand? And, uh... Channel, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, and eternal.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Our Father in heaven, we want to thank you for this day and for the privilege of being able to be alive and to live in this community. We thank you for our nation. We thank you for our servicemen that are serving our country throughout the world, and we ask that you protect them tonight. I ask that you be with this meeting, be with this group of people in this room that serve this community, and I ask that you bless them. I pray that this meeting, that you grant them wisdom and understanding and clarity in each situation, that they can respond what is best for this community, and we just do ask your blessing upon each one. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Don. Good to see you again. Good to see you again. Call to order, our city council meeting of September 7th. Second item on our agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have any? We have none. Item number three is consent agenda. Items A through I. A is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 17th. B is the approval of budget amendment number five, moving general funds, GPWA funds, capital equipment funds, and stabilization funds and air force funds. C is the approval, approve the renewal of the Honor Park lease between the City of Guthrie and the American Legion. D is the approval of the civil defense, cyber and maintenance agreement between the City of Guthrie and Goddard Enterprises. E is the approval of the agreement between City of Guthrie Logan County Services for temporary shelter care for juveniles. F is the approval of cooperative service field agreement between City of Guthrie and Regional Airport and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. G is consider approval to accept the assignment and assumption of agreement between CEC, Park Hill, and the City of Guthrie. H is approval of professional service agreement with Dr. Warden for, to serve as the medical director for the fire department. And I is the approval of VMS contract agreement between City Guthrie and Logan County Emergency Medical Services Board of Trustees. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Can I ask a quick question?
Question, absolutely.
On G, could somebody explain that one to me?
D?
G. Assignment and assumption agreement with CEC, Park Hill, and the City of Guthrie.
Our consulting engineer at the airport, that group changed and went from one firm to another firm. We'd like to continue to use that same group of individuals.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Are we in the GPWA meeting that started at seven?
No. We're in the city council meeting.
We flipped them this time.
Oh, another one of them deals just for me?
Yes.
Okay.
So where's the city council meeting?
Motion approved, second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present to approve consent agenda items A through I. Item number four, continuation of the workshop. Actually, we don't need it.
It's not necessary.
Because we completed everything, so that's not necessary. Open a public hearing to review the fiscal year 2022 budget, general fund miscellaneous funds. If there's anybody that wants to ask a question, this is your opportunity in public hearing. Hearing none, close the public hearing. Item number six, discussion and possible action on resolution 2021-25, adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget.
So moved.
General fund and miscellaneous. Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to approve resolution number 2021-27, adopting the revised non-bargaining employment payment plan and adopting, well, payment plan which includes the personnel policies and adoption of the city resolution 99-15. Leroy?
Our current pay plan had become dysfunctional, had not been maintained and had not been followed for a number of years. So this is a revision that sets the floor with a minimum of $15 an hour for full-time employees. And our non-bargaining employees were adjusted based on their years of service on the new pay scale. They didn't all start step one. And it shows each position where they're classified in the playpen, two and a half percent steps between each step in the pay plan. And this pay plan has been incorporated in the budget that you just adopted. Be glad to answer any questions.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve resolution 21, 2021-27. Item number eight, discussion, possible action, authorize city staff to renew contract with United Health to provide medical, dental, and vision insurance, and Dearborn National to provide life, AD&amp;D insurance coverage for the...
It's clear. During the break, I handed out some spreadsheets that outlined the benefits and the options that we had for FY '22. United Healthcare came out to be what we feel is the best option for our city employees. It's the identical plan to last year for health, dental, and vision, and no change to life insurance to Dearborn either. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you guys have, but bottom line, as Leroy mentioned during the budget hearing, it's about a 9.34% increase from FY '21 to '22 in order for us to maintain the same plan, same benefits.
I'd like to explore city council being put on this plan.
Okay.
Seriously. I've talked to Leroy about it. I'm not kidding.
I would think maybe that could be assigned to our finance committee to work with Kristen and maybe even our city attorney, because I think we'd have to look at our charter to make sure that our charter allowed that as a benefit. You know, other cities do that.
Yeah.
And I think it could be warranted as a benefit, but I think we need to, one, review the charter and make sure it's allowed, and number two, work with Kristen to see the opportunity to add council members, opportunity to be covered by our employee health insurance.
Okay, good.
So we'd have to have a finance meeting before open enrollment?
Open enrollment's October, so that'd be really ambitious.
You say ambitious.
About as ambitious as they come.
I'll definitely work with Leroy and see what that looks like.
I would think that...
Because I'm actually on the finance committee, and I can make myself available at any time.
Okay.
I would think that, and I forget the correct terminology, but I would think even if it's after the enrollment date, if it was determined...
It's a special event.
It is an event that would create an opportunity for an additional enrollment. I forget the fancy term for that, but...
Kristen, this covers full-time and part-time?
Just our full-time.
Just full-time?
Yep, yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So that smaller sheet is an anticipation of if all full-time employees, if we were fully staffed, took all of the insurance, which we've got, of course, we've got some folks that are not staffed, some open positions, and some folks that just opt out of the insurance for various reasons. So that, the smaller page shows the budget reflected based on 126 employees. That's, everybody had it, we were fully staffed. The larger spreadsheet shows the budget numbers based on who's enrolled currently as of the time that we got the quotes.
Could we get $15 an hour, too?
Pushing your luck.
While we're at it, we want to relax.
Pushing your luck.
Really pushing the envelope.
About 15 a year, that would be at least...
Huge increase.
If there comes a time here worse than Leroy's...
I have read some things where insurances were going up significantly more than 10%, so I salute you and your team who negotiated this, because that's, I think that's pretty good.
And I give a lot of that credit, or all of the credit, honestly, to Benchmark Financial. They did a great job negotiating for us this year. Last year, Leroy did a really smart thing and negotiated a 12% cap on health insurance, and then Benchmark took that a step further and negotiated that even further down to nine and a half percent. So they did a really great job for us this year.
I see Benchmark in the back.
Absolutely, yep.
It's the one smiling back there.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous approval then for all those present, councilmen present, to move forward with that, with that pavement, with that plan for insurances. Item number nine, discussion, possible action to confirm mayor's nomination to the park board. Take these individually. Appointing Colleen Golightly for a two-year term through June of 2023. I think you all have seen her application.
Leroy's got a question.
Yes, sir.
When you get ready for discussion, I've got some items to point out.
Okay. We're taking them individually?
Yes. I still have comments.
Okay.
On A or B?
Well, I think he's waiting for a motion on this.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Now discussion for A.
Okay. I just wanted to point out, technically, these are unexpired terms that end on June 7th, 2022. On the agenda and on the staff cover letter, it says to appoint him through June 6th, 2023, which is fine if you do that, but technically, these terms started back in 2020 and end on June 7th, 2022.
Because they've been vacant that long.
Correct. And so my recommendation on the first motion would be, so you don't have to come back in eight months, would be to appoint Ms. Golightly, am I saying that correctly? To fill the unexpired term through June 7th, 2022, and then subsequently appoint her for an additional two-year term through June 4th, 2024, so that we've got it covered, don't have to come back in nine months, do this again, and then you still have it staggered, where you'll have three up in '23 and two up in '24.
So we're going to amend the motion?
Who had the motion?
I did.
Will you accept that?
Yes.
And you had the second? You accept that amendment?
Uh huh.
Okay. Any other discussion? Submit your vote. See the votes. Unanimous approval from council present then to appoint Ms. Golightly for a continuing existing term, which goes to June 7th of 2022, and then for a full two-year term to June 7th of 2024.
June 4th.
And in 9B, this is the reappointment of Van Cordray to the park board. He's already served two full terms.
I want to, go ahead, I want to talk about that when you're done.
Okay. Has already served two full terms. Under the resolution 2020-18, the council can waive our restriction of two consecutive terms on the board, and that's the nomination, is to appoint...
But it's not just for this one, it's for going forward, it would no longer be there, the restriction would be gone?
No, just on this appointment.
Okay.
It's just on this appointment. And we've had a couple of those in the past. But this would be for, for Mr. Cordray.
See, I've tried to set the precedent where we just get rid of that. If people want to serve, we let them serve. We haven't done that, and we should have done it. I used Van as an example of that, because he is an exemplary park board member, but it's real hard for me to go for this, since we're not getting rid of the whole deal.
I think that would be a separate, separate...
Well, then I'd like to table, I'd like to table, I'd like to table, make a motion to table Van.
Wait a minute.
Until we come back to it.
Leroy's going to ask questions.
I think this one might bear some additional consideration, because the park board is only two years at a time.
True.
And the other boards that we've dealt with, similar to you're talking about, have three-year terms, so when they get a two-years or two terms, they get six years. In this case, in the park board, when you limit them to two terms, they only get four years. So I, I think this one is a little unique compared to the others.
But I still want to take up the discussion of this term limit deal anyway.
And that could be another. I just pointed out, this one's a little unique, because the terms are only two years long instead of three years.
Couldn't somebody please explain what the purpose of that is? Why we have the...
Well, there's, um...
...long terms?
There's at least three of us sitting here that voted for this about four years ago.
Five years, something like that ago.
Put the restriction on it?
Put the restriction on it, so that, so that there would be an opportunity, well, let me just speak for myself.
To quit running retreads.
An opportunity for new, new vision, new blood, if you will, and, and not somebody that...
Well, but what's happened with that is that there's not enough people to fill the opportunity, so that kind of blew up on us. And when we make bad decisions, as good business people, we ought to be able to say that was probably not the best decision being made. And I was part of making that decision.
I think we can, and I was too.
Yeah, so. With that being said, I'll make a motion to, for Van.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second then for Mr. Cordray to, under the provisions of the resolution 2020-18, to have a third consecutive term, two-year term.
What we do is the same, where it is for nine months to fill out this term and plus one more, so that they're all the same, and they end the same.
Who gave the motion?
Brian did.
Did it. You're just amending the dates.
Brian, will you accept that?
You know, I really want to address, we can, I think, come back to that. I really want to address this, getting rid of this term limit thing before we move any further on it. I think that it's fine like it is.
Okay, we have, we have, okay.
He can come back when it, that moment.
You don't have to accept the...
Yeah, I don't accept that.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. We have a vote of five to one, so the motion would carry, yes, the motion still carries, to appoint Mr. Cordray for a, another two-year term to the park board.
So point of question, I guess, for clarification. If I understand correctly, the council members would like to consider city attorney adopting an amendment to the current ordinance to consider doing away with the term limits?
Yes.
It's been requested by Councilmember.
If there are any other changes you want to make to that ordinance, I think city attorney or Kim could send out the current ordinance for you to review, see if there's anything else you want to talk about changing, and then city attorney could draft one for future council meeting to consider that.
That's a good idea.
Well, what happens if you have new blood that wants to be a part of the, and they come forth, and so there needs to be a process to give them an opportunity to be considered?
I would say...
And placing those that have been on there for a while.
The, the city council would still control, it would be their decision, it just would be controlled by ordinance. The city council can always decide to appoint new individuals rather than reappoint existing ones.
But we've got some that have been on there 34 years and refuse to leave.
Yeah. Whose fault is that?
These guys.
We'll have that, we'll have that in-depth discussion when it comes up on the...
Well, but we also have boards that have no, don't have head count because of it.
We will discuss that. You're absolutely right.
That's, that's the kicker that I'm, that's my position.
Okay, let's move on to the, when it comes up as an actual agenda item for...
That'll be the juicy.
Two weeks. Okay, item number 10, discussion, possible action to adopt and approve ordinance number 3360, closing a 20-foot by 300-foot alley. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you indicated, this is for an alley closure. It's on the, basically, east-central part of town, on the very eastern University Avenue. It's generally over by South Hazel and University Avenue. The applicant owns most of the property, I think actually, outside one or two properties in that entire block, and so they were wanting to close the alley, because they want to go through the process to vacate it, so they can combine all of their properties into one, because as it sits now with an alley, you can't physically combine all the properties. There were no objections from the utilities, and the city does not have any water or sewer utilities there as well, so there was no objections from the city nor the utilities.
Was there any objection by the other two owners?
No, no, but as with every case like this, all property owners within 300 feet were notified, so there was notification provided to not only them, but also others in the area.
So how does that combine the property, out of curiosity? I mean, I know what the...
Yeah, because right now, you physically have that right-of-way that sits there, so you can't, you know, because there's properties to the north and south. It's kind of like the typical blocks we have over here, where you have properties on the north and the south.
This alley's behind all of these properties.
No, it runs right in the middle of it, so they own property to the north and to the south. Yeah, so by getting...
Building in the middle of the alley.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I entertain a motion. So moved. And a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with ordinance number 3360. Item number 11, discussion, possible action on request for Spirit Wing Aviation for the City of Guthrie to provide consent for the assignment of hangars two and 21 and the fuel system. Jalon? Leroy, who's taking that?
I will start it. Spirit Wing Aviation leases two hangars at the airport. They're identified as hangar two and hangar 21. I think you're all familiar which two hangars those are, and then they have a fuel system agreement that is tied into hangar 21. We have received a request from the owner of Spirit Wing to assign those leases to new ownership. There are provisions in that lease that require the city to approve those assignments, but we cannot withhold approval unreasonably. There's really no clear standard set on what reasons you would object to this, if any, so it's, it's pretty much based on a request from the owner to, to assign the lease somewhere else. He will, he actually assign the lease and be out of the lease, it'd be new ownership. And so I will let the owner of Spirit Wing go first.
Identify yourself and address, please.
Calvin Burgess, and I guess in Guthrie, I live at the Dominion House. But actually, most of the time, I live in North Texas. And a few years ago, we, my wife and I were able to purchase a big piece of property in, in East Texas that's very special to us, it's, it's got almost unlimited water underneath it, so its value is extremely high. And so we were basically selling all of our worldwide assets and moving everything into that property. And that includes the Guthrie hangars. However, I have a jet program that unfortunately had to shut down because of the COVID thing, but it is about to resume again, and it is going to stay here. We have two buyers that want to purchase it, Bob back here, and another gentleman, Bob Bartman, I'm sorry, and then the other one is Marvin Pittman, but Marvin is very ill with COVID right now, he's got that Delta variant, and he's going to survive, but it's, otherwise he'd be here. Effectively, the southern hangar, the number two, will be what Bob will run, and they will put a probably, I'm speaking for him in a way, but not, he can speak for himself, I'm wrong here, but I think their goal is to put about four corporate jets in it and run the jet fuel system out of it, and put in some corporate cars and some really nice stuff that will make them really upgrade the airport a lot. The second one, Marvin Pittman, he's an AI and an ANP, which means he's an inspecting authority and an aircraft mechanic, and he has all the licenses for some very specialized things, like rebuilding landing gear, which is also the most expensive and the most profitable part of aviation, I think, if you're in that business, and avionics, and all those things really need to be in the Guthrie Airport. So he will be taking the hangar to the north and providing those services to the public, and likely maintaining some of the planes that will be put into the, to the south hangar. It should greatly increase the fuel cells, particularly on the jet fuel, should be good for the city. And we want to leave, we'll still be around off and on, but, but I want to leave it, I think we've, we did a lot to get this airport moving years ago, to try and get the, the runways extended, and part of that was doing these hangars, so that there was a lot of things. But all good things have to come to an end sometimes, so that's what, what we've done. So we have two very qualified viable buyers, and, and then that's what we're asking for, is just an assignment of the leases.
Make motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Leroy?
Staff has a couple of recommendations on hangar number two, and we would recommend that you approve it, subject to the city attorney preparing a lease assignment document to be signed by the city, by Spirit Wing and Mr. Bartman, so there's an official agreement. And then the second thing we would recommend, there's currently an outstanding balance on a old CDBGE DiF fund, about $30,800, and we would recommend that, one of the requirements to assign this lease is that, that old loan be paid in full before the assignment of the lease.
So I'll amend it.
We'll work it out.
Accept that.
And accept those changes.
Show the light.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all councilmen present then to move forward with the assignment of hangars two and 21 and the fuel system.
I've got a different comment on 21, so that's just two I was talking about.
Oh, so we're not done? We got a revote?
I think we ought to treat them separately, and one would be assignment of lease on hangar two.
Well, I motioned them together, so how, how do I split it?
Just make your motion relative to hangar number two.
Okay, so motion is relative to hangar number two, current motion.
Accept that second. Okay. Any other discussion? We're just talking about hangar number two, talking about a lease agreement that would be going through the attorney.
Payment of the loan.
And the payment of the outstanding balance. Okay? Okay, submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then for hangar number two, with the amendment to work through the city attorney and the full payment of the outstanding balance of the loan.
On hangar 21, I've, I've got it broken into three things. This, this would be hangar 21.
Now, is that going to add the fuel system, too, or is that a separate issue as well?
It will be a third item. This is just hangar 21. Hangar 21 lease, all we're recommending is again, a lease assignment document prepared by the city attorney for signatures by Spirit Wing, Mr. Pittman, who is doing that lease, and the City of Guthrie. And that's the only recommendation we have on assignment of hangar 21.
So moved on 21?
Have a motion and a second on hangar 21. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval for those, from those present, uh, to, uh, move forward with the, uh, with the change in, in Hangar 21, uh, subsequent to, uh, a appropriate lease being reviewed by our city attorney. Fuel cell.
The third one would be dealing with the fuel system agreement, um, and again, um, two recommendations. One would be subject to the city attorney preparing a lease assignment agreement, uh, but in this particular case, because right now, the fuel system agreement is tied to lease 21, we think all four parties ought to sign this one. Uh, Mr. Pittman, Mr. Bartman, and, because right now it's tied to 21, it's being moved to Number Two, so we think all four parties ought to sign this agreement. Okay. The other thing that we would recommend is, um, and only if the, uh, tenants, uh, want it, is right now, the fuel system agreement, it says Spirit Wing shall have the right to install two additional fuel storage tanks for its own commercial use, provided however, Spirit Wing shall not be entitled to sell or dispense any 100 low lead fuel from either of these two tanks to any unrelated person or entity. Such storage tanks are to be solely for the use of Spirit Wing and its affiliates. This was written many, many years ago, and I think it lacks some clarity on the ability of who has these, uh, uh, the fuel system agreement, on who they specifically can sell fuel to, who they can't, and we would recommend that that be clarified in this transfer agreement, so it's clear what the rights of that individual has.
You want to come to the microphone, Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Let me, I'm still the same guy.
Same address?
Same address. Let me give you some history here. When the fuel tanks, the, the government decided in their infinite wisdom that we had to change all the fuel systems in all the airports about 15, 20 years ago, and the City of Guthrie did not have the funds to do it at that point of time. So I came forward with a proposal, and I had the only jet on the property. So I used to have a truck out there that I'd fill up and fill up my jet. So we came to a, a, an agreement with the city council to, um, let me build fuel tanks for my own use. I also had two very fuel thirsty, a bomber and a P-51 Mustang there. So I was feeding my own planes with it. So part of the deal was that I would build one jet fuel plant, tank and 100 low lead tank, but I would not sell the 100 low lead to anybody else, and that we've never done. And it was also so the city would get all the revenue off of the 100 low lead that was being sold through your own tank, and then I paid for your tank, and I put it in and did the whole thing there at a considerable expense. So those tanks, that's how it got to be in there. And going forward, with intention is now, is not to compete with the jet, this 100 low lead the city sells, but the tanks, we will leave the tanks, they will both become jet fuel, um, and we'll have a great backup of jet fuel. So we'd have roughly 16,000 gallons of jet fuel on the property instead of 8,000 is what we've been using out of my tank.
So there'll be no low lead?
The city's.
The city's.
The city's low lead.
Right. You'll still have that. That's a self-serving. And there's a thing about 100 low lead, uh, most people want to buy 12 gallons at a time or whatever, and they top up their plane, and they want to save a dollar a gallon, so a lot of the guys want to pump it themselves. And so that just help, 100 low lead has happened throughout the airport system at this point. But really, your, your revenue stream off of that stays exactly the same. The jet fuel will be, um, basically as it is now in a sense. We, we use, we put it in our tanks and then it's sold to whoever, and we have an agreement, uh, that we split the revenues with, with Crabtree. Okay, and then he's planning on doing a similar situation.
All right.
Does that make sense?
But what your recommendation is, is that that be clarified in writing?
Yes, I think Mr. Bartman has a comment.
Hi, Bob Bartman, Weatherford, Oklahoma. Uh, yeah, to clarify what Leroy is saying is, the language in there is the word affiliates. I intend to, I would be the sole owner of the plane and fuel that plane only. There would be no affiliates. The people that I want to bring to that hangar, right now there's a B-1 bomber in there. I want to bring four or five people to put their jets in there, rent them out, create more traffic for the City of Guthrie, more revenue for the City of Guthrie. Uh, so I think what Leroy is concerned about, and I 100% agree, is those are not my affiliates. They may be tenants of mine in the hangar, but they would fuel through the City of Guthrie and, like any normal person that would land at the airport. My aircraft would fuel at the rate that we discussed because it's my personal aircraft, but, uh, that's the long, and really my long-term goal with the airport, with the city's hopefully long-term relationship and partnership, I spoke to Glenn Crabtree today, is that on my cost, I own a real estate development company, is to, at my cost, kind of take that property and just give it an uplift to bring more traffic, reason for people to fly to Guthrie, Edmond Regional Airport versus all, everywhere else. And, and I think Glenn told me we sold about 45,000 gallons last year. I think it's very simple. If we put four aircrafts in Hangar Two, that number goes up exponentially. So it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
So my request was because there is some lack of clarity in the wording that, uh, the party signing this, that our city attorney works with them to make sure that maybe it's spelled out a little clearer going forward in the future and incorporate that language in the assignment agreement.
So you can work with, with our city attorney and resolve it. So I make a motion to approve based on, um, putting together a clear agreement.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all of councilmen present.
And we appreciate you guys, by the way. Our community does.
So what happens to the B-1 bomber?
I don't know.
They can say as long as they want. I mean, I've heard that they're going to be out sometime early next year. I've got several tenants ready to come, and in a perfect world, we would all like that, if they're flying 250 hours a year. So, um, I, I'm hoping to have another meeting with all of you.
I just thought it was cool.
Exciting opportunity and potential.
Sure.
All right, item number 12, discussion possible action, uh, on the FHWA, uh, project, Logan County Transportation Alternative, HAP grant, uh, for street skapes. Uh, Danny, you taking that? Leroy, you taking that?
You got to fold it in kind of a nice little organ, or a gummy way.
Little history on this. Of course, this is, uh, a 2016, uh, grant that's been around for a while, and there was a lot of concerns about curb extensions on Oklahoma and Harrison at Division. Uh, it went through the, uh, Section 106 Historic Review, and SHPO, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office, uh, rejected the inclusion of the curb extensions and plannings, uh, along Division, uh, and with using, uh, federal highway money, uh, the project could not move forward without reevaluating the project and designing it in a way that accommodates the comments from SHPO. Uh, we also looked at, uh, maybe relocating, uh, these funds to the Harrison Street Bridge Project. Worked with ODOT for quite a while, seen promising, and then they denied that. Uh, so what we're back to is a street skate project that still serves a purpose, but it won't, uh, uh, do everything we originally intended. The, the purpose of the curb extensions or bumpouts was to provide better safety enhancement for people across the street, uh, maybe some beautification. Uh, those elements won't be there, but we still will get drainage improvements along Division. Uh, and this project runs from the alley north of Oklahoma Avenue to the alley south of Harrison Street on Division. Um, and all sidewalks, uh, uh, runs shall be stamped concrete, uh, brick pattern, calling the red, which we use down the park. Uh, all crosswalks shall be stamped concrete as well. All corners shall be stamped concrete. The alleys will be real brick pavers, and, uh, the drives, uh, will be concrete. Uh, and again, as I said, the, uh, curb extension, uh, or the drainage will be improved. Uh, what we need tonight is, is one motion, uh, to authorize us to go forward, uh, with this concept to ODOT and to SHPO to get their final approval, so then we could put this project out for bids. Uh, and the second one, because this has been going on for 2016, and we've asked our architect to redraw this about 50 times, they've got additional expenses, and they are asking for, uh, the sum of $65,330.46 for additional services, which I think is probably warranted as much as we've had them redraw this project over the last, uh, what, five years?
I'd pay that much to never have to hear about it again.
Motion to approve both together.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all council present, then to move forward with the project modification, and also to, uh, execute the additional services of 60, approximately 65,000, the Littera Studios. Item number 13, city manager report.
No additional reports.
Item 14, uh, comments by city council, vice mayor Case.
No, I don't think I have anything.
Councilman Williams.
Welcome to, um, the Bartman and goodbye, unfortunately, to, I, I still Spirit Wing, I guess, but Calvin Burgess has been a great addition to this city for quite some time going, HCM lead, but all good citizens come to him.
Councilman Taylor.
Uh, staff, hey, I appreciate all of y'all's hard work on everything, from all, but it's, you know, tennies operation all the way down to fire chief, chief of police.
Down to the fire chief, all the way down to the fire chief.
Yeah, all the way down to the fire chief. Oh, yeah, and one last thing. Uh, happy birthday, Jim Case.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary.
That's it.
And anniversary.
Oh, yeah, and happy anniversary as well.
Councilman Bothrow.
Great job on the budget, everybody. It was painless this year, and I think it's, um, it's a good one, so that's all I've got.
Councilman Channel.
I didn't have one police chief question.
I'm still waiting.
And I only had a couple for Howard, though. But since we're on it, Bothrow is crying about the old body shop down on South Division. That's ugly. Since we're going to beautify Division, we need to beautify that joint too.
But we need to beautify every entryway to our town is what we need to do, and if you go around, and I have, there's some that aren't near, um, as inviting as others. And that main South Division is a main thoroughfare.
And you probably need to visit with Dan and Bill on that. I know the city looked at it one time, and it was going to be cost prohibitive for the city to undertake that project, and now that we're maybe in a better financial situation, uh, so you might want to visit with them to get the ball rolling on that one.
Okay, uh, we've got, uh, vacancy in the, uh, Guthrie Housing Authority, uh, board. Uh, anybody interested in that? I think we still have airport, uh, a vacancy. Chalan, is that right? Am I correct? Okay, uh, so at least two opportunities to, uh, get more involved with, uh, with your community. Um, congratulations to everybody involved with the Jeep Fest, as well as the last, uh, of the Red Brick Nights for this year. Uh, huge successes all, all around. Uh, I know we've got a big car show coming up, Mineral Wells. Uh, there'll be people coming in from all adjacent states, I, I, I understand, for it. It, it is big. Of course, we have, we have the, the fantastic flying coming up on the 18th, uh, and a great opportunity to come out and see, see your airport, uh, in, 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 in full, uh, regalia, and, uh, kids get some opportunity to fly for, for free. So a great opportunity there. Um, COVID is still with us, folks. Um, if you haven't got the shot, consider, consider getting in, uh, and if you're in a compromised situation, wear the mask. I think we're going to be fighting this for a long time. Um, item, uh, item number 15, consider approval to convene to executive session, uh, for the purposes of discussing, uh, continuation of the, um, continued employment of, uh, city clerk and treasurer, uh, the, uh, judge, uh, city judge and alternate judge, and the city attorney. Have a motion. Looking for a second down here.
What?
We know what you want.
Well, then say something.
I ain't doing it.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Submit your votes. Unanimous approval then to move into executive session for those, uh, prepositions.